Listening to your goals and dreams is our top priority at West Tennessee Bank. Benefit from our more than 100 years of experience and visit our Henderson branch today. West Tennessee Bank, focused on you. West Tennessee Bank is a division of Decatur County Bank, equal housing lender, member FDIC.
All right, thank you. Next we'd like to approve the minutes for the special call meeting July 7th, 2020.
Look it up, approve, Mr. Jack.
Aye.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnny Connor in a second by Todd Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next we'll have our quarterly reports and any amendments. We'd like to start with the school system. Commissioner Jim Crowder, junior.
Has that total question, does he even have a question?
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly report.
Aye, sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jim Crowder in a second by Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Any discussion about the report? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We have a present. Also the, well, people, I guess it's been more closer to month plus. The last time you asked me about when we were going to start school, that time I was reporting from what our data showed, that has changed. In reflection of that change, the community spread COVID. We included a plan for virtual school options. We solicited our community stakeholders to see who would have interest in attending the school. We had several conversations with different folks wanting to have options provided that we were not initially planning to offer. And again, following the data, at that time when we were doing the initial plan, we had zero active cases, things changed. Because of those changes, we sought out in very, very fashion, a plan to offer virtual school options for all of our families. We solicited the feedback again from the stakeholders and we've had approximately 600 students being represented. We would like to see a virtual school option. To be able to do that, they need to be able to have demonstrate provable internet at home or in households where they're going to be doing their school. There needs to be sufficient supervision of students because it's going to be inclusive of all grade levels, 8 through 12. We can provide hardware services with technology of the last cost, or Chromebooks is what we use. But for the services, for the internet and for the supervision, that's going to be expectation of the families. So within those guidelines, we received about 600 who were interested in pursuing that. To do it, well, we, what this county is known for, having a good education. Our teachers are not getting ready to offer virtual learning. We're going to be working this year, starting right now, about how to deliver virtual learning. It's not the same as the physical structured learning that our students and our staff have interacted with. So we're in the process of teaching and providing the content that our teachers need to be able to offer that because it's probably a venture that will reflect every year to come after. So this year, our plans are to offer virtual learning platform. That's a reputable plan that's used, well, actually, in the state of Alabama, first for their entire school district, all in their state. And they've had the ability to research and to review other options of different plans and platforms. So I feel pretty confident that we chose a good product. Our school, Montgomery County Schools, which is just south of Fort Campbell, also has been using this platform. This goes into their third year. Another good resource of a school district that's very successful who have chosen this same platform. The platform is not cheap and for us to be able to accommodate our students, the cost is going to be inclusive of not only the platform to be able to participate with the online coursework, but again, until our staff, which will take this year to do, before they'll be trained to be able to offer both the physical instruction that they've been accustomed to for these years and now the virtual instructional plan. We are going to, with this company, this platform, has purchased the additional rights to have their teachers deliver the instruction. These are people that are hired through this platform to deliver. So initially, it won't be a Chester County teacher teaching it. We'll be picking that task up as soon as we can. In the best case scenario, it could be this semester or after this first semester, or the likely it'll be after this year. With that cost, we have figured the cost for those 600 to be approximately $1.3 million. It's not a cheap venture. It's a commitment that we made to those because of the spread of the crowd and the need to do it right. We have the funds in our bank account and our school board this afternoon has already approved from their part, the budget amendment that will reflect that cost into our current budget. So I'm requesting you also to allow us to spend our monies that are available. It's there for emergencies and this is an emergency. And we're going to be responsive to the request of our community. We're going to do what's right for our kids. And we're going to offer that type of instruction that's going to lead us to continue to be one of the best school districts, whether it's physically, which I know this feels better, or numbers.
Look it up, approve the amendment.
Aye, sir.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any more discussion about this?
So, Mr. Hiller, I got a question. In preparing for this, I know a county in Alabama, they're using school budget and they're placing them in position where there's not internet and they're putting Wi-Fi in them and no kid can connect. Has that been considered in their plan in place or?
There's been a lot of considerations for a lot of different states. To speak to your situation, and I've not got the numbers and the mapping in front of me, but I've had multiple conversations with different providers for internet and cellular. We have purchased some last spots which will allow us to provide internet service or cellular service for this use with students who have need. But there are large sections of our county that have no internet service at all. A hotspot would be about as worthless as a paperclip in certain households, even if you sit on the bus and you put that bus next to the teacher's bus. I've had meetings with Southwest Tennessee Electric, I know they've been here before the commission, I've met with them. In three years, the hope is that they will have internet provision for every customer in the county. However, three years is not to death. So I'm hoping for better in the future. I've had conversations with people at the state level, at the national level, and it is not just in Henderson or Chester County where this is an issue, it's an issue all over rural West Tennessee. It actually rules America. There is not that contact to the internet that some counties like Davidson County or Shelby County have been accustomed to and complain. Ours is more difficult because of that lack of internet connectivity. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Hiller, mine's not really disgusting, mine's just pretty much common. I watched y'all's meeting this afternoon. It's setting on a board. You're going to make decisions in a board. You make one person happy, that's it. I watched y'all's meeting and I think you and school board should speak a minute. This is something that y'all worked hard on for the past month to make this as safe as you can for your students. I don't have a child in the school system anymore, so I'm not going to offer my opinion on whether I agree or disagree. I don't have a child. I have a life as a school teacher, but I don't have a child there. I agree with something Mr. Bailey said today, whenever you change your schedule, I think there's people that looked at other options and thought, well, you can't host everything. I agree with what Mr. Connor said, whenever he said if you're going to do virtual in your school, they want to sync up. And I agree with what Mr. Moore said, when changing it a week, it's probably not going to change anything. But I want to commend your board. I know y'all took a lot of heat and a lot of pressure, as this board does. Very rarely do you get paid, but I watched your meeting and it was obvious that those people had what they thought was the right way for the school system, in those counties. Whether I agree, they agree, or anybody, it was obvious they thought they had their best and building. So I understand.
I appreciate that. The board has worked really hard on this and it has taken some heat for the decisions that have been made, but I can tell you, it's been all made in the right response and the right issue, which is what we're concerned about with the kids in their state.
All right, we have a motion in a second. If there's any more discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we have the highway department. Jerry King.
I'm going to approve the highway part. Do it in a second. Go.
We have a motion in a second. We have any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Have any amendments? Thank you. Next, we have the trustees report, Mr. Lance Pershears. We have a motion to approve the trustee's report in a second.
I make a motion, can we approve?
A second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any more discussion about trustee report? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have the county general, Mr. Givern.
Is everyone now a copy of the quarter report? No, no, county general, solid waste. By saying he's just here, county general, we've lost to Estes Bay Dallas, a 3 million, 49,000. Our actual budget is 3,105,000, this split, receiving of the nursing home fund. We rejected outright a 10 of a amount of about 6.10. If you have any questions on your schools, I'll be glad to answer them.
If not, any questions, do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Tim Crowder in a second by Andrea Hall. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
If not, any questions, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve.
I got a question. Is this about the Walker data?
No, sir. This is just the briefing, the quarterly reports. We have a motion by Mr. Russell Clayton in a second by Joe Malaro. Any commissioners with any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
If you haven't listened, thank y'all.
Next, Ms. Savannah Gibber, the library. We're going Chief Harwood with the fire department.
I've only got one paper report and two new, we were awarded a $5,000 grant on Southwest Electric, Hairs Act, again. That's going to provide randomly fire homes for a new station. So that's going to be handy. I appreciate that, Mr. Russell. Any questions for me about fire?
Well, we will thank you here for saying what you put in on your cascade system, there.
Good question. I should be here by office fifth, office fifth.
Thank you, Chief. Next, we have a report on the county planning commission. Mr. Barry Smith.
County Planning Commission met last month and we approved to send the zoning resolution and subdivision regulations to a public hearing. That public hearing is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM upstairs in the courthouse, the old courtroom. And public is invited. This is a public hearing. At that point, if those are approved at the public hearing, they will be sent to the next county commission meeting for the county commission to approve the zoning resolution and the subdivision regulations. So that is on the agenda tomorrow night. Hope everyone can make it and those only commission please make the point to plan to attend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I'd like to bring in Mr. Amber Green and Mr. Danny Benar up to voting to give us information on solid waste.
I'd like to talk to you something like that. I don't know if Danny Benar is a solid waste director or a...
I tell you what, Danny, if you want to, you can turn that volume around and address them if you want to.
It doesn't matter. It's a really hard... I like suddenly Mr. Danny Benar, I'm a solid waste director. And I've been a solid waste director for 19 years here. And this is the first time I've ever handled or administered harm to citizens and asked for an increase. And I know it's a hard time to do it, considering the economy, it's a coconut thing, like this stuff that's been down for several years. We have over the years not used property tax in our budget. We used everything except the exercise tax, motel, TBA, cable tax, and we've also been using, the nursing home was sold about seven years ago, and the gentleman who bought it has been making a paper every year. That paper has been going into our solid waste budget. That last paper could make this year. So we're trying to get the funding back from them. And I know it seemed like a guy on social media, whatever, but it's nothing that solid waste has been done over the years. We had tried everything and a lot of things to keep it from being this poor. Certain things like recycling and so on. My guys working to create jobs out there, still hiring people. We did that over the years to try to keep it from being here. But the growth of the county and a lot of things, it did just, even though we did 1,300 tons of recycling, diverted $80,000. Still, the growth of the county is outrunning the recycling program. And this basically has nothing to do with recycling, although a lot of people have put it in. It's not, it's just on the solid waste side. We need funding for the solid waste. We had a meeting in June, we gave the commissioners several choices. One was property tax. They did not want to have a property tax at this time, considering the state of the world. And I can see that. I hate to even have to ask for it, but we have to run solid waste and it's something that's got to be funded. It doesn't have to be funded great, you know, we don't have to be funded, we don't have to have this extra funding at all. We can cut it, but I don't want to cut it considering all the years that we put into it and where we inhabit it at this point. Like I said, the property tax was not an option for them. We had several others. One was a disposable fee, Amish control, landfill fee, there was a lot of different things. But we kind of, in our opinion, Amber, I thought the disposable fee would be the best option. It is the hardest to make work. We probably the parish across everybody in the county. And we were asking for $8 per month, which is $96 a year. We had went to several other counties that has put this in place over the years, talked to them, checked out all the businesses and everything. Every one of them said, ask it as high as you can upfront so you will not have to come back. And one year, two years, three years, five years, been asking the same thing. So we kind of get that. They didn't have to, maybe some commissioners have a lot of citizens thought we were asking too much. About never $308,000, and I may have to get closer to the record on this, but we're a little $308,000 in the hole on our budget, our cost of fees, lots of funds. We have had a lot of growth lately, even the march people made with the disease, the people that brought the stuff out to the citizens, overran our budget, line items were laying as much as $40,000. That seemed to completely carry over to the budget this year and hasn't stopped. I don't know if that'd be a big difference, or unless the growth factor that was in there. But that being said, the commissioners did not want any increase in budget this year, so they asked me to use the same budget I did last year this year, which normally I was going to have to cut a lot because we had already over expended a lot of line items together. So if you put that into effect, you're looking somewhere around $400,000 short. Now, $8, if you figure $7,000, households here is around $6,000, I mean $600,000, $80 something dollars. That being said, that does not allow too much money in there for error. And the other thing is, we seem to have to respect how many households is actually in this town, in this county. We're going by 2010 census, which shows 70 among 100. Checking with Beverly, you know, it could be as much as 9,000 depending on if all the households could create trash, it could be less. We're not sure how to go about getting the exact figure to start with. I don't know if we'll be able to figure it out. So we're trying to allow for error. A lot of counties only didn't collect 70% of whatever, depending on how you instigated. A lot depends on if you own property, you don't have a house on it, then there would be a lot of need to put a disposable fee to that property. There's a lot of people that's pays property holder people that, I'm sure, the state pays a tax relief. They get a tax relief. So it would not be a good idea, but they had a tax relief, $50, and the state paid that $296, too. So a lot of counties, if they get a tax relief, they cut that back. Some counties have told me that if you do, I mean, if you don't go across the board and charge everybody, then you're just going to a lot of headache trying to fix these people, fix things and do that. We're still looking at all that, but right now, we're just trying to present something for commissioners to start out with. And we've already had a couple meetings, but it didn't go to good. Amber has something she wants to read out here, and this, and after that, I'll try to explain this, but it basically answers all your questions, specific issues, and comes to some people and some stuff. Amber, before you do, I'll have some paperwork in my office, I apologize, I'll be right back.
Y'all are to come fair with me if I make the exception. How much does Chester County spend on landfill and trash? Last year, Chester County residents brought 6,240 tons of trash, 991 tons of construction and demolition to the solid waste department. The tip in the hallway fee cost of this was $272,052 at any sense. Some of these questions come from my school, so please keep that in mind as I go through them. Last year, the solid waste budget line item was budgeted $220,000. That means last year, all money we had to spend on solid waste and sanding was $220,000. We overspent that line item by $52,000. That is because of the increase of trash that everyone brought to our center in the last year. Why is the solid waste department needing money back? The solid waste department used rent from the nursing home and some proceeds from its sale to offset landfill costs. The last of that allocated money will be spent July 2021. The solid waste department will need $308,000 to replace the money from the nursing home and another $52,000 to cover the line item and the budget that was overrun due to the infiltration of trash last year. Why did the solid waste department and county commissioners choose to present the solid waste disposal fee at the meeting tonight? We held a meeting in June with our county commission, our solid waste board, and we gave them options. So I'm going to go over some of the options with y'all. One of the options was to raise property taxes by 15 cents. The commission did not want to raise property taxes this year and decided that this was not fair to property owners since everyone in the county creates trash. Option two was the solid waste disposal fee. This fee would cover everyone that creates trash and does not just target property owners. Based off the numbers received from the census, Chester County has 7,158 households. If they pay $96 a year, this is $687,158. Option three, we talked about, was pay as you throw. If a resident brings four bags of trash, a couch and a TV to our apartment, we charge them for those items. So we would charge $2 for a bag of trash, $15 for a TV, and $15 for a couch. That means on point trip, you would pay $38 at our scale house and you weigh in and you would pay on exit. This does not seem like a logical explanation. In some other states do this, and they have huge budgets and they have a huge solid waste that they have to deal with, like Memphis. Memphis has tons and tons of trash. We didn't feel like pay as you throw would be right for our small community. Option four is using the money left over from the sale of the nursing home to fund solid waste. There is $900,000 in a CD left from the sale of the nursing home. The commission could choose to use this money to fund solid waste for almost three years, but this is not apartment solution and the county will have no reserve money if a major disaster happens. Unless in two years, a solution for solid waste will need to be decided if we choose to go this route. Why does the solid waste department need $8 per month? We are currently $308,000 short from nursing home funding. Trash is increasing every year with the growth in population in the county. Last year, a line item was overspent by $52,000 from the residents bringing more trash to our centers. Eight other counties are dealing with this same situation. Some have a disposable fee and they totally down and collect 70% of the money. We do not want to have to stand up here again next year and go through this. So that is why we ask for the $8. We can no longer keep up with the increase of trash to our centers. Our truck driver calls for sometimes six losses a day to keep up with all the furniture, the tables, the C and D. We need another employee just to keep up with what residents are bringing in every day. The city of Henderson pays sixty thousand dollars to the solid waste department every year for tip fees for city residents' trash, and the county pays the holiday fee. Because the disposal will be paid by all city and county residents, the city of Henderson will not be required to pay the sixty thousand dollars to the county. The solid waste department will need to add in the additional sixty thousand dollars to the disposal fee. So we will need four hundred and twenty thousand fifty-two dollars and eight cents to bury city and county trash. This amount includes the three hundred and eight thousand dollars for sure, the fifty-two thousand dollars that we overspent in our budget because everybody brought us ton of trash last year, and sixty thousand dollars for the CD. The trustee's office has agreed to collect this fee for us. It is not a property tax increase, but would be added on to the tax bill of the solid waste disposal fee. This disposal fee can be used for solid waste only. The trustee's office made a part-time person from October to February to help collect this fee. Some other counties use their electric company to collect the fee instead of the trustee. We checked with our electric company, and we would have to use three. It seems logical to use the property tax office to collect the fee. Why can we not open a landfill? Chester County owns the last permanent landfill in Tennessee. It is a hundred and fifty-five acres and is located on Shoreboat. In the last five years, the solid waste department has one that sells the landfill. Waste management companies say they need six hundred tons a day to open the landfill. It would cost one point two million dollars for the county to open it, and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to operate it. Why can their recycling center not fund solid waste? The West Tennessee Regional Recycling Hub has nothing to do with solid waste. The hub has a separate budget from solid waste and was built in two thousand and ten, variety over five point five million dollars to grants. The hub is funded by the sale of recycling and charged cities and counties fifty dollars per tonne to bring recycling to the hub, and we charge a ninety dollar per tonne contamination rate for contaminated mugs. So no, you are not paying for any other city or county's trash with a fifty dollar fee. Last year, the hub sold two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of materials and charged cities and counties a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to bring recycling here. It costs, the cost to run the hub every year is three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. The hub was set up to divert materials from a landfill, save the county money for landfill fees, help our environment, and create jobs. The hub saved Chester County seventy thousand dollars last year by our residents recycling one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three tons. If every resident recycled, the solid waste department would spend that money burying trash on landfill. In numbers that came from Facebook, why did the solid waste department misuse the money and now they want to tax us? The solid waste department has not misuse any money before. The nursing home was sold a few years ago, and it was discussed during the solid waste meeting, would need to be funded with the money paid out. Which brings me to my next statement. It is not okay for residents to cuss out our eighty-five-year-old employees, belittle them on Facebook, or ask them to take less pay because you're upset about paying a dollar for them. Our employees work in trash, they handle dirty diapers, use tampons, use condoms, needles, feces, and have it swiped just never use. They work in the rain, heat, and cold every day and never complain. The solid waste department provides service to everyone in this community, and everyone in this community uses all five convenience centers. We have the cleanest convenience centers in West Tennessee because our employees go above beyond, and they keep you from walking through bleach aid while throwing out your trash because our center is clean. The solid waste department has tried to handle this situation with grace and kindness, but if you come to our convenience centers with inappropriate behavior, you will be isolated. Maybe you should consider volunteering in our community, or spending the day with solid waste employees, commissioners, collective officials, or mayors instead of slandering them on social media. If you are upset about the solid waste disposal fee or any other options, I encourage you to come help us with the solution instead of being.
Regarding that guy's paragraph, we've been a lot of, and I'm not saying this to any of y'all, but we've had people come through that's, I gather, you know, they're, it's hot out there, they're sitting on an umbrella, and they're saying they need to make four dollars an hour. Most of them make around eight, eight thirty-three. It's not a lot, staying out in the temperature like Ted Freeman in the cold. You know, there's a lot of people coming through out there, they have a job to do, so try to be able to make it. This really has nothing to do with them, you know, if you want to fix somebody big, clean up, don't fix them. As you can see, she's maybe all a lot bigger, but the recycling center, we tried to divert this year with something seventy thousand dollars, eighty thousand. We diverted, some say if you close a landfill, you close this, you complete it, because the recycling center down, we'd have money. You can see we would not have it. When we built that, we told the commissioners we would make it run on its own, and that's what we do. And if it doesn't, we'll shut it down. But right now, if you shut it down, that means eighteen hundred tons goes back into solid waste, which is going to cost you sixty more thousand, we got to add to what we're doing. So as long as we can run everywhere to work materials, they're there. And materials right now do not have a lot of value, the way they're convenient, they're the lowest I've ever seen, but we can still sell them. But you can see that she's charging people on the front end, the back end. Some counties have quit running it here because of the county. But, you know, I'll take any questions, but, you know, we're back, I know, eight dollars, it doesn't sound like a lot per second this day and time. It's one real combo of dollars or winnings. But I know from in the past, I came from a large family of ten brothers and sisters, and back a long time ago, ninety-seven dollars is a lot of money. I'm sure there's a lot of people in this county, ninety-seven dollars, we don't know if it's all the money, it's food on the table. But we have to fund solid waste, you know, like I said, don't want to fund it, we'll just cut back whatever funding we got. We provide service with the amount of money that is given to us. And we try to provide the best we can with that amount of money. We don't waste it, you know, as some people say it. You can ask some employees there, but, I mean, we try to do as best we can with it, and I think we do a good job. But we have a hub, the recycling hub, there's only one of two in Tennessee, and I don't know another in other states, so.
He's going to be up to these gentlemen here to decide something.
Pete got a question, and he'll hear it to the right.
I pay a man to come pick my garbage every week. He comes up here and pays sixty dollars a ton dumping that was y'all. So he's going to have me and him both pay it? Or is he going to get it dumped free since I've already paid it?
You're talking about the commercial hauler or just the resident?
Resident.
We don't charge residents.
He comes and picks up our resident?
I think you are talking about a commercial hauler.
Yeah, yeah, he talks about, he's a market hauler.
Are you talking about that? Right now, Mark Peters runs a business, and I've tried to go over it before, Mark. He runs a business, I cannot take money that is given to me by a commissioner, which is awesome, and fund his business. I can't do that. He can thank Jackson a lot, you've been bragging out there. We have to charge the hauler what it costs us to do it. We've been trying to help commercial haulers ever since day one. Legally, the way it's written up, the laws, whatever, the convenience centers are set up for household refuge home. That's the garbage that you create inside of your house. It's not couches, chairs, TVs, it's not buildings, it's not stuff that commercial haulers haul. But we've tried to help them over the years, and now it's almost down to where, five years ago, we may haul one box a month. Now, like I said, we're hauling five or six a day because the commercial haul is coming up.
No, Mark's probably going to fix it on our business. Comes fixing, put a can and start to wait at my house.
You would still have to pay the eight dollars fee?
Everybody has to pay the eight dollars now. Mark is doing a high-low level search, you're paying Mark because the garbage is taken to the landfill or bringing out there. That really has nothing to do with us. You make that decision to do it.
But I don't, I don't.
But you're paying him to do that.
Then, well, should I pay you?
Why should we have to pay?
Why should you have to pay the eight dollars?
Boy, should I pay a hundred dollars a year? I'm going to fix it anyway.
But that's your choice to pay that. You don't have to pay that, Mark Peters. All the convenience centers are there for everybody in the county to use. If you choose to pay somebody to pick it up, that's your choice, but you still have to pay the eight dollars.
Are we comparing apples and oranges here? The difference between the cost of getting the trash to Chester County and then the cost of getting the trash to the landfill? You're, he's talking about getting the trash to Chester County, you're talking about getting the trash to the landfill. Well, we really are talking two different things here.
But he's paying, in his case, Mark Peters to bring it to us.
Mark Peters don't pay my garbage.
Yeah, yeah. But it's still apples and oranges.
And that's where he's paying, once he gets there, when it's cleared, then at that point, we have to get rid of it. And right now, with the tipping and hauling of solid waste at thirty-nine dollars, we're taking it along this city. And then, because we're doing, we have to pay, we go through the scales, we have the transportation. That's where the extra money is, he can take it to, he can take it to Jackson, he can take it over for a lot less than bringing it out there. But if he chooses not to do that, that's.
That's what I'm going to imagine more about this, Jackson. But why should I pay you if I'm eating your food?
Mark Peters is the only commercial.
I don't, I don't eat Mark Peters, I eat Mark's food.
He does not come to our facility.
I know it, Mark. I know it, but I don't eat, I don't eat your facilities.
Right. That is up to our commission and the product. We have to drive the product and send it to state legislators, and then it has to come back and be approved by our county commission. We have to put all of those details in there, and right now, we're doing it fair across the board. You would still have to pay the eight dollars even if you don't use our facility.
By law, we have to charge every resident in the county that eight dollars, we can't give them anything else.
I don't want nobody to be paying it.
That's the only way to do it.
Yeah. We want to live in a check, nobody paying it.
It's not, you may, it may not be fair to some people, but there's no way, we cannot go any deeper. We cannot exclude you, exclude that, exclude that. If you do, we're probably going to start out at fifteen dollars. There's no way to do that. We talked to too many counties that tried that, they end up the first year having to go back and double what they did. You know, most of them don't, they charge terrific schools, nonprofits, everybody.
I do have one question. Will free hardens be paid?
They already paid.
Okay.
Free hardens?
That's the only thing that pays in the county.
Free hardens and everything, everything, man, that's incorrect.
They don't pay, they don't pay taxes?
They pay sales tax.
They don't pay, they don't pay.
They don't get any property taxes on things that are not used for education or for religion reasons. It's like they, I see a thousand dollars for that year for paying the garbage. They have a truck, they rent it, we love to.
This meeting is also not bash another people for free time. Don't worry, I don't think it does either.
There ain't one. What, that's not?
Sorry. Can you answer that question?
Yeah, can I?
I got two or three questions. Okay, like you. I'm not gonna say that. I got two or three questions. Looks like the trustee's office is going to be heavily involved in this. Too easy employees or county commissioners. That's one of the questions. Okay. Trustee office, oh, oh, collecting fees and mandates for the needs of additional employees, is that right?
Yes, I'm a trustee, I can answer that.
Okay. Would this prevent the payment of employees' measures of making any personal or physical mischief?
I cannot answer that question. Big ladies that are making.
I'll answer it.
Want to be employees.
They are employees, but this does not help them, it's not like a paid crease or anything like that. They simply work there, so I don't see any kind of, we're talking about a conflict of interest. I don't see that at all.
Okay. I would also like that county commissioner, Bernie, any, any opposition to whether or not they should be keeping them.
I don't know. The same two commissioners we were just talking about? I do not think they, there is a conflict of interest. If an attorney's in the room who wants to correct me, I'm perfectly okay with that, I'm going to do what's right, believe it or not, but.
How's like hardy here, huh?
Yeah, there is no conflict of interest here.
Apparently, if Bernie got in touch with me, he wouldn't be able to make it to that.
Well, you're going to get an extra employee out of it, I think this is what it's like.
For the amount of work that we're going to have to do, is it okay if I dress this while we're here? Can everybody hear? We're looking, this is a totally new subject, Chester County. We have gone to other counties and looked at their program, we've looked at the successful counties. What we're going to have to do is go through the tax roll, unless the session can provide a list of all the houses that are considered garbage-producing households. We're going to have to go through there and figure out which ones are producing or garbage-producing if that list can't be ascertained more quickly. When you do that, just looking at the simple information that I get to produce, to collect the taxes, I can break down a house, the, I can break it down by residential properties. The problem is, a duplex, triplex, apartment building is listed as commercial. Well, city drawdown here is, is a business, it is a commercial property. So we're going to have to distinguish it, and I hope all of y'all can hear me too, because this is going to be, I agree with Beverly, an extremely intensive process, and it may not get done by the end of one year. When I first started this, I thought we could do it, I thought we could pull our resources together, that's not going to happen. So with one extra employee, and I'm not sure I understand your beef with that, but with one extra employee, I'm hoping we can get the information. I think we can get a majority of it, but you're going to have people come in here saying, "Well, that house, that house burns," or, "There's nobody living there." You're going to have exceptions, people are going to come in and try to get away with it. You're going to have to decide as county commissioner, are you going to have an appeals process? You're going to have to determine whether you let some of these people on tax relief enjoy, not enjoy, if you're going to let them have a discounted amount, discounted fee. The more we get into this, the more questions come up. So I do appreciate the questions, I will also appreciate any patience with us as we try to do this. Now, the staff that I currently have, I'll put them against anybody, they're top-notch, they're the best two boys I can, I can have. They do their work, they're going to do their work steadily, and they're dedicated. I still don't know if we can get all this information together in one year, I'm just going to be honest with you, okay? Anything else? Any other questions to get here?
I got a question. Bob brought it a long ago. Their front page a little bit of problem here, maybe it's a jack, or a man, although they got a degree in it. How, how can anybody there?
That's a good question. Does the information leave you tomorrow night? I hope, again, I hope that we can pull resources together, because that will make everybody a lot easier. It may be something that we haven't even thought about, that maybe we may have to talk to, see what nine one one can offer us. We may have to work with the city to see, because they have a list of all the city houses that produce garbage. I don't know, I mean, I do not have all the answers right now, I wish I did, and that would basically to not have the answers. But I want to be, I want to be fair, and I want to be upfront with the people. This is new, and it's not going to work just like that. So if I have to have an additional employee, because we can't stop taking taxes, we can't stop the many jobs that the trustee's office does every day besides collecting taxes. As far as I'm concerned, collecting taxes is just a, is a major, another major responsibility within our department that takes place mostly through October, February. We are busy doing things every single day of the week. We handle, we sort of handle funds for the school department, for the highway department. We have a lot of responsibility, so it's not like we're just sitting there twiddling our thumbs, we want something else to do. It's going to be a. It's going to be an intensive, intensive process getting all that information.
How you going to curb the food trade, the dump, the apple trade? There are four matters, getting the model way in.
If you live in Chester County, if you own a property, if you own, let me back up. If you own, and this is my understanding, if you own a garbage-producing household in Chester County, you're going to get a tax.
I'm sure you're going to be only paying.
It's going to be on the tax notice, because instead of paying a utility department, even if you could get one to do it, you'd be paying them a lot of money. If you got a private vendors coming in to do it, you'd be paying them a lot of money. We felt, we've talked about this years ago, because we knew this was coming. We have had conversations about this. And I told them we would be glad to help if we could. So, so we're going to add a fee onto every single property tax notice if we deem that it's a garbage-producing household or business. I don't necessarily like it, okay? I'm not jumping up and down to do this. But I want somebody to carry my trash. I don't want it strung up and down the hallway. I don't want it strung, I don't want my neighbors bringing it to my house. I want somebody to carry my trash. The fire department, the fire department gets funding, as it should. The library gets funding, as it should. This is just another department in the county that provides a necessary service. So, we are going to have to find a way to fund them, no matter how unfund it's going to be and unpopular at times, to make, to require them to provide that funding.
Okay, thank you, Lance. Appreciate it. Because we'll have a couple more questions, but we'll limit each question to about a couple of minutes. Yes, sir, Mr. Jackson?
Well, I think we, right now, don't have enough information to make the decision on this. Danny does a good job out there, everybody knows that. But until we get all the information that we need about how many homes that we have in the county that produce garbage, how much money is going for you, I think we need to bring that before the commission, or we can make it a good decision. Danny, is there any way that you can enforce the people who love the county bringing their garbage in here? That's why we turn away from town. Go out there and get some money, or maybe either county or.
That is, you know, we, at one time, we had several thousand. Y'all knew the resolution that you had to have a Chester County tank. But you'd be surprised how many people that come out there a day that goes to another county and borrows a brother's truck, five counties over to bring your garbage out there. And they stand out loud to you time after time. And that's the same way with commercial haulers. They'll come out there with materials, which we don't charge residents. I've got one commercial hauler, he's got a brand-new house, but he's towed his sheep locker fifteen times this year. So, you know, he lies, got standard, just like people that has, they go to Madison County, and their tag is only, what, twenty-four dollars, twenty-nine dollars? They go over there and get their tags, they buy the car there, they pay for the tags, or they won't come. And they come out there and use every piece of it. I went over where my brother lived, I let park the truck. Next week, some of their same thing. So, they lie, and we try to turn them away. We have, suppose to my guys, if they come out there and they have out-of-county tags, you let them dump, you give them a sheet, say the next time they have to go a couple years, then pay the wheel tax, and they're okay. Or they can get the tags whenever they want to. And that has worked. I mean, we have cut down a thousand people over the years. We had a thousand people at one time coming out of county. Comes slightly near county, they do double-dump it a couple. But they do not have any bulky items like TVs, couches, chairs. They don't do that over there. They don't do brush, so they have, they were trying to bring that over to us. And that costs a lot of extra money for the taxpayer, so we're constantly trying to cut that out. You have a lot of people that work in this county that live in other counties. They want to come by and drop the garbage. You know, how they, and they, she says, "I buy my groceries here, I should be able to dump my garbage." I tell her, "I go to Jackson and buy my garbage, but don't take my garbage." I mean, go over and dump, dump over and dump my garbage. So, and that's a constant thing. And you'd be surprised how much people that just stand right there and lie to you time after time. And it's hard for my guys to keep up with that. So, I don't know if there's any way completely cut it out. Over the years, we have cut it out a lot of it. And they'll ride up there, and they'll sit inside, and they'll come over and say, "Look, I don't have that tag, I want to dump this." Sometimes I let them go in, dump, tell them not to come back. Because you have a lot of people contracted to come in and do that, so.
Okay, this lady right here.
I'm the person on social media that posted this, about this, because I have questions. My name is Sarah. She said it wasn't going to be personal. You popped someone up here that didn't want to be personal. I have received private messages from the waste department that have been personal. I have received private messages from county councilmen's lives that have been personal. I came here asking questions. I'm sorry, Dan, but I felt it was wrong to, I mean, I said social media. The question I had, you said four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for Chester County, for our county to be ready to waste because of the shortfall of fifty thousand dollars, okay?
Not fifty thousand.
No, four hundred and thirty thousand, counting the fifty thousand dollars that you were short. Okay. So, again, thank you, Beverly. Possibly seven thousand households. That's our, that I think that's possible.
But it's possible.
We're not really sure really how many households that produce trash in our county. The census says that there's seven thousand one hundred plus households in our county.
So, that comes to six hundred and seventy-two thousand for seven thousand households. Not counting renters, which you said were commercial properties. So, me as a taxpayer owning two properties in Chester County, one being waste-producing, one not being waste-producing. I'm all about keeping our county clean. I'm all about not seeing trash on the road. I'm all about helping people that work at solid waste. What we, what we have in excess, if you're collecting in excess of what you're actually needing right now, when households, including my own, have lost jobs because of COVID, that ninety-six dollars may not seem like a lot to you because you're working, but to me, it is, and I've got this ability. So, I come to this county, at the county councilman, asking you, "Look at everybody fairly, including your renters, people that are not property owners. And if it is going to be a fee that the trustees take, collect on, put it on our taxes, then why not just make it a tax where we can do a tax right on the beginning?" That's my question. Because if we're going to pay the fee regardless, it is adding on to our property tax. Yes, one of my properties has been sitting vacant, I know I'll have to pay for one. But I'm going to be able to take that amount out on my taxes, where this fee, I'm not going to be able to. I just ask you to consider that.
In regard to your property that does not produce garbage, we will try to, and this is, like Lance, sometimes it takes a year to get this out. In my opinion, if you've got property and there's no house on it, or you've got five lots, there's no house on it, and it doesn't, that will produce any garbage, I don't actually think parts of it. But it would take time to go through all of it. I mean, somebody would have to check it out. And in Lance's case, he's agreed to do this, but it may be a lot more in-depth, you know, to go through and do all of it. It'll take a while to do it. It's been, it's been, it's been nine years, it took them five years and countless times to be sued. You know, they did the tax relief, and other people sued them, saying it was not right to do a tax relief, and just because you had money, not, you know, give it discount. So, they spent years doing that to get it situated. Part of the county, they did not, the first year, they done good. There's a lot of different ways we go to it, but it takes a while to do that. And I'm not sure how we're going to, like I said, if you start picking it, it's going to take a while when somebody has to do that. You know, you have to come in and say, "I've got this property that has no house on it." Or, "You have a house there that my mother and father lived in ten years ago, they died. Nobody's lived there, it's just sitting there." But that's going to take a while, too.
For next year? You're funded for this year, but not next year? So, can we take the time to look at the questions, or councilmen, look at them?
We have time.
Instead of brushing through and passing? I'm all about paying to keep our county clean, but I want that present any time, so we can start.
Definitely, the property tax would be easier on us, but.
Also, your social media post, what you posted was fine. It's the people commenting on your post, and you don't.
Yeah, you got a good question. She's on, I don't do social media.
And then someone, not, you're not posting an attached video, and wondering that why he's driving a brand-new personal truck. That's providing a message. So, it's not directly a post, it's looking for comments, I appreciate it for a while.
Fair. I talked the other day about the, you have a current leader that you're paying, paying light bill on. If it was a resident, you'd be taxed at eight dollars, charged eight dollars, like. But if you've got a farm shed, for instance, and it'll be listed on that deal, that you're getting a different bill on, but nobody lives there, that farm shed's not usually taxed. Well, that would be taxed. But if you've got, if you've got a resident with a light company building, then you do pay that eight dollars, because you're going to make an exception for, "I'm not producing a tax, I have the same county that's producing any garbage." You're going to have to do it, put it on there, and have a statement for what it's for.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's saying. That Lance would have to go through all them properties to sort them out, which one, and it might, it might not be, it might take a year to do that.
When you get, I get two different light bills, for instance, several months. But the one that comes for the shed, paying the marks on the light bill, shed. It's on a commercial rate, don't receive no pay. But my house, and I don't bring, I don't want to pay the eight dollars. That's how we have to do it, because you're going to exempt the people at the county that will produce any garbage.
Okay. Ms. Beverly?
Thank you, Barry. I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners all received the letter that I mailed to them a couple of weeks ago. It was referencing why we have not provided data to the commissioners at this point in time. Did everybody get the letter from, from me? Everybody get it? Okay. As Amber has already said, Facebook is a great tool, but sometimes it's not a very nice tool. There's been some miscommunication as to why the property assessor's office had not already produced all this data for y'all. And it is a huge task for our office to be able to do that. There are some properties that we cannot produce the data for, because if they are exempt and have been exempted for many, many, many years, we do not have assessment data on that property. Schools, churches, universities, state-owned properties, county-owned properties, city-owned properties. All of those have potential to produce trash, but we do not assess them. So, if I told you that we had seven thousand households that produce trash in Chester County, I would not be including all of those, them properties. It is by law, by state law, that my office does not assess travel trailers, school buses, tents, which we do know that we have people who are using those as households in our county. Those are not assessed through the assessor's office. By statute, we are not allowed to assess those properties. So, those would be exempt from any data that we may provide to you. So, anything that we would have would be inconclusive as far as total households that produce trash. And as Danny just said, if grandmothers in the nursing home and her house is sitting there boarded up, it would not be producing trash, but it is assessed. So, you have flip side. You're going to have some properties that we're not going to have information on, and we're going to have some properties that we do that will not be producing trash. That's what I was trying to explain to y'all in this letter that I sent out. It's not a failure of ours to give you that information because we're being facetious and we don't want you to have the information. It's just that we cannot provide you with the information that we feel is necessary for you to make a good decision on who you charge a solid waste fee to. And I just want y'all to understand that, that our data is there. If you want it, it's there, we'll be happy to give it to you. But you must understand, it's not going to be all of the data that you want. And I just wanted to clear that up. And that's why I sent the letter out to all the county commissioners, so that you would actually understand why we were hesitant to be just throwing out numbers, since it would not be conclusive numbers. Questions? Thank you.
I have a question. Was your total budget sure for, with, without?
Without the nursing home.
Without the nursing home, total budget sure for?
What we were short last year? Fifty-two thousand?
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two dollars and eighty.
All right. So, the nursing home added?
Thirty-two thousand.
Okay. There's seventy-one, is that seventy-one hundred households in this county?
Yeah.
That's six hundred.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. Where is the rest of this money? If you're just short, how much do you have?
There's actually four hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, well, okay, well, there's still two hundred thousand dollars.
There's about two hundred thousand over that.
All right. I don't know about the rest of the county residents. Two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, if you're going to.
It is. And, you know, we can go lower, but I was told we go high, because you may only collect sixty percent of what you want. And the other thing, I think I mentioned earlier, that since we took property taxes out about fourteen years ago, and we did that, because at that time, if you do property taxes, you have to fund the city. And that was on a big expense. So, we took it out and started funding it by motel taxes of.
Beer, yeah.
Beer, TBA. We have to do the budget, or Julian has to fund the fire department and the library out of the summer. And it's hard, it's hard to give enough money to do that. So, we're trying to look at a solid way to fund the solid waste in the future. So, that's why we're looking at the disposal fee, that's a way that would have a steady income coming in.
Okay, so where does that extra two hundred thousand go? Does it set a bank?
It would go to fund banks, so.
Fund banks. Getting paid off for, that projects that the county comes up with sometimes?
Now, that money in this ad could not be used for anything else besides solid waste. And at that time, like, I don't know what amount that the commission might decide on, I'm just.
Well, I know, because I'm six, it seems to be prevalent, that's what we're kind of set on here, I guess, thereabouts. But we still don't know how many folks we're going to lay this off of. So, if there's more, that number goes up.
Yeah, I don't know how to get that fixed. Two weeks' price.
It's twenty, twenty, I'm sure of it.
At every end of the month, yeah. So, with most of them, some of them collect it all, some of them get seventy percent of it, depending on the houses.
I understand that.
But if you don't go to the high side, you may not get it, but go to the high side. You'll ring them.
I'm not opposed to paying for the service. But I don't, and I don't think that any of this county will be fleeced either. And I understand, I know what you're about to say, I understand. I understand that you're trying to look for the future, too. I've got that. I'm not going to, too ignorant to believe that. But there's got to be a fair balance here. And this commission, the elected officials, this commission owe it to every constituent that they serve to make sure that's done right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lance.
We have equipment that's also thirty dollars, because we have to have the money to replace our conveyor boxes and open boxes. So, if you bring a piece metal out there, you can stock it, and we can reuse it to repair our boxes. That is currently what we're doing. We don't have the money to repair our boxes. That is currently what we're doing. We don't have the money to repair our boxes. It's like two hundred thousand dollars for them. But in five years, we get to renew our contracts with Pacinations this year, for five more years.
And I understand it's expensive.
It can look to sixty dollars plus a ton, depending on what the loan video is when we do that. So looking ahead to the future, which is hard to figure out, basically, you're looking at, you can figure those living numbers that I'm here to hold.
But I'm also looking to the future myself. So let's say we come up with eight thousand. I came by the dollar, I'm thinking that's another hundred thousand, because our balance is correct. So now we're three hundred thousand over what your current budget is. That's what I'm trying to figure.
And I'm sure that's where you're reaching a little bit lower than me.
What? And that's fine. I pay the fee. I just wanna make sure the money that I look for today goes to what it's supposed to be used for. That's the period. And I'm sure everybody in the county would like to have that same thing. I don't buy that, but I pay the ninety-six dollars. I pay under dollars if it's used correctly, and used like it's supposed to be.
And I appreciate that, uh, you're willing to... Like that, uh, we are audited, uh, audited, there are offices, different offices, several months out of the year. If the trust these offices is gonna be collecting this thing, uh, we put it in special account. He will be able to see what is in there at any one time. As Amber mentioned, uh, if we, if the fund balance grows, audit requires you to have a, a fund balance in case it bursts. Uh, if that grows beyond what they suggest that the guarantee is, we'll, we'll know the fee. I think that's...
That's right. I think what I just said, that's a lot of the basic information that I come to make a lot of community. I mean, I think I've calculated, like Sykes said, they have one hundred times ninety-six, and it's...
So now we ask you, four hundred thousand. You're starting out in the business. We've gotta keep called up to ground zero, and then start building that fund balance. Plus the equipment plan first.
So you've got nine hundred thousand set in the city?
Just, just to, to equip it.
Sir, you got nine hundred thousand set in the city? Or, but that money was going, wasn't it? That money from the, that was from the sale of the, yes, correct?
Yes.
That money was going to solid waste, correct? There was, I thought you said that you was getting money.
It was, we had a plan that we got one point one million dollars put in front, seventy hundred. We need to exit the, for capitalizing. And we had payments made on the balance of one point one million for fifty years, which we had to do.
But they decided to pay off early, because that ran?
Yes, and I paid the whole balance.
And that's fine, I'm glad they did. So some of that money in that, "I'm gonna pay you off soon," doesn't go to them?
It did.
It did. Well, for this next year, when do they pay off the nurse call?
They paid the official, but we should just pass this, but we get no money extra from that. So there's no revenue there on the, for next year.
So what's the nine hundred thousand dollars? What's that nine hundred thousand dollars to you?
The nine hundred thousand dollars you did by now is in capitalizing.
Okay.
For emergency, for whatever rights, you know, letters, hundreds, you send down the dollars, a lot of this air game. When I'm still second, uh, let's, let's find out who we have others.
Okay. We, we need the commissioners, if we could, um, a lot of this is getting in repetition. Saying, we're saying the same thing quite a bit. But let's ask the basic questions by the commissioners and then let's make a decision on something. Uh, Mr. Al?
I'm, I'm, I just like to reach the office, the reds of the reds, probably, to make a change. Can I hear another question?
You might have to give us time to get up there. Ms. Anne, did you need a question?
Uh, yeah, well, more of a statement than a question. I'm on the solid waste committee. And I know that all these questions are knowledgeable, valuable questions. But believe me, nobody's trying to hoodoo or take your money. It's, it's, there's a lot to work, be worked out. And we're doing our best. And I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to table this, if we can.
If I may, I may.
I mean, table it from tonight, but not make the decision tonight. Uh, not vote on it tonight because there's so many issues we've worked out. And believe me, we are very fortunate to have Danny and Amber and their crew. And also Lance, I mean, he has taken on this responsibility, and he don't have to. I know a county, I know a county that connects with us that's trying to get somebody to take this job, and everybody says no. So he's taking on a headache that he don't have to take on. So, you know, we are trying our best to get this all together and to work it out. We represent you. So we're, we're working, we're working for you. So just be patient with us and give us time to sort out some of these issues. And believe me, we are not gonna try to beat anybody out of the dollar. We're just doing what we have to do.
Hey. We have a motion, though.
That would be good. If it's not brought up, we don't need to table it.
Hey.
Well...
Gentleman here.
I had my hand up waiting for when that damn gentleman jumped up.
Yes, sir.
I heard, I heard a pretty picture up here. I heard how much all this stuff costs. And I, I, I think that recycling place is one of the great things in this county. Don't get me wrong. We probably need money. But I would look at myself and say, "Where can I cut that doesn't hurt solid waste?" The part. Don't speak before, because I, I know what you're gonna say. There are things out there, and I see with my own eyes that can be cut.
There is always where to be cut.
Well, I think that's where we gotta look, before we start asking for money. Now, also, Unit Thirty, the end of the bucket, isn't it? Am I right? Unit Thirty. Everybody agree on that?
Yes.
There was six forty-yard dumpsters sitting there full of metal. Why weren't they sold before, here? Can you answer that question?
Yes.
We did not have a lot to haul. And then we've got eighteen that are pretty old.
Okay.
Because we had nine come in this weekend, we can't...
There was one?
They're older ones. We cannot haul.
There's other stuff sitting around that yard. There's good sitting there.
Are you the person that asked about the beer cans at the burn hall?
No.
Okay. I was just wondering.
I am, I'm not...
Right now, we just sold twenty-eight thousand annual aluminum cans because they went to forty cents. They had been sitting here for a month because they went down to ten cents. The metal and Smith over there, they went down to twenty dollars a ton for the month of May, which is... You know, the stuff, they went back down to two hundred dollars. So we try to, we try to get the best price we can for them.
I'm not saying you're not doing this, but there's always ways to do that. That's my thing. Now, I think some of these people need to go out there and ride around that place and look.
I think they do.
For your own eyes. See what, what's going... Again, again, I know you need a raise, and I know you're trying to do a good job.
Marketing is the biggest part of solid...
I understand that. Now, other counties bring their recycling to us, right?
Yes.
We need charging.
Yes.
Maybe we need to charge them more.
We do.
Before we go way out of...
We actually just doubled it.
Okay. And I don't wanna say anything about the city, but it's a city paying for us. Plus, you're gonna lose that sixty thousand dollars.
The sixty thousand dollars is gonna be put in this fee.
That's what?
The sixty thousand dollars is going to be put in this disposal fee.
That would be...
But once you put that tax on, or whatever you wanna call it, that goes away. Am I right? Oh.
Mary? Am I right?
What we talking, about talking about is?
The fee that you pay the county will go away once that gets off.
The tip and fee, our tip and fee is something that'll have to be discussed simply because we don't know what to think. But saying that, we got twenty-five hundred customers. A county, we, we look at, if it passes at eight dollars, we look at county, county residents who live in the city will probably pay over two hundred thousand dollars when they're part of this. So we kinda look, we kinda look at it that way. But that's an issue that the comptroller and M Task, C Task, and everybody will give us that information on what can be, that, that we still have to pay that sixty thousand.
See, the ninety-six dollars is the final minute. I come from a place, if you blow your nose, they tax you. Okay?
And this amount of tax.
I, I don't care what you call it. It's an interest. Okay? Like I said, I come from a place, and that's why I came down here, that if you blow your nose, they're gonna tax you. Okay?
Uh, this, this already has been tabled, so we can just continue it at our next commission meeting. We don't have to give another motion or a second, because it already has been tabled, Ms. Anne. So, uh, we will get more information. If anyone has any questions, if you could give them to your commissioners. As far as tonight, for the next on the agenda, or, uh, we need to continue, uh, for the resolution of the private act, what that was, if anything did, uh, if we had, if we had a motion and a second on the resolution for a fee of any kind, we... This private act was just for the commission to allow Lance to do the collection for the county solid waste department. And it would only be used for the county solid waste. And we would have to write it up as a private act, and it would have to send, go to the state legislature. But until this fee is set at a certain amount or we go to other, uh, options, uh, since it is already tabled, we will just continue it at our next meeting. And we will go on to, uh, the update of the Chester County ambulance facility, which I, I talked to them today out there. They are finishing up some minor details. And also, they're got some outside work to do, and they're going to have the final inspection. They say they plan to have it this week, and the fire, uh, fire marshal is going to do the final inspection after the electric, electrical inspection. And when they get this complete, we'd like to have an open house and let everyone come. And, uh, before they, the ambulance service moves in. And they really like it. They enjoy it already, that they, they like the new facility. And we're just anxious to get there too. And on to other business. Is there any other business to bring up? Yes, sir, Mr. Jerry?
I talked to John Barry today. You know, he's off of the, he was there.
Yes.
And, uh, he really don't want the whole community to come in and go through this building. I mean, with this fire that makes a good sound.
Okay.
So...
I tried to be in touch with them. I did with the hospital and the construction company, and they was willing to, they was wanting the community to see it before they moved in. So, but I haven't talked with the ambulance personnel.
When you have all the beds, stuff up there?
Yes, that, that's what, we just wanted to do this before they moved in. So we'll, I will get back with them before we make a decision on it. So is there any other business to come before the commission?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The letter from the County Highway Superintendent, requesting a portion of the funds with...
Yes.
Due to the shortfall in the fuel tank.
Yes. The governor's initiative grants, um, that has a history back that started, that they was going to help the counties out. Uh, and it started a lot smaller amount, and it started that it could only be used for five purp- purposes, uh, which I have them here. Uh, but since that time, uh, they have noticed that counties are in more distress than, uh, they would have noticed, and they have added to the amount, they doubled the amount at one time. And ours, our amount went to six hundred and thirty-three thousand, I believe. And, uh, they also have another initiative that, to be allowed to get it, we have to be go to a town meeting. And, uh, they said in Janu-, in July, that this could be used for a mo-, for any purpose because it would go into the general fund. All right, before that time, when there was, uh, certain things that it could be used for, I'd already started and in the process of trying to get up what this money could be used for, because it only could have been used for certain purposes. Them purposes being IT hardware upgrade, capital maintenance, road projects, and for public safety, that is. They couldn't be used for any other purposes. And I had talked with the Southwest Development District, and I was wanting to go on and submit some of it, but I wasn't going to use the whole, all the amount. And they told me that I could not do that until I got cost estimates on what the projects would need to be and turn all that in at one time. And, uh, that's why it hadn't been turned in yet, which we won't receive our money to the end of the month. But now, the, the amount has went up to seven hundred and ninety-five. If I attend this town hall meeting, and it's for five days. And I plan to attend. I've already signed up and registered to attend. Uh, but at that time, we can get together and get our priorities, which, we had a priority already in effect with our courthouse. The shingles, they was leaking inside the building. We had to go on and get a, uh, bids, and we opened them, and it's worded. And this weekend, they're supposed to re-root the courthouse, and he said he'd be done by Monday. And they, I know, I've heard that there's rain coming in, which I hope he can still do that.
How much did that cost?
Uh, the bid on that, the one in, it was thirty thousand, I don't remember the exact amount, a little over thirty thousand. And, uh, that, that needed to be done. And I called C Task and asked him if we could go on because that was a necessity. We had voting machines in there that we didn't want, not wanting to get wet. And they said, "As long as the contractor be willing to work with us to when we receive our grant money." And he said he would.
Mr. Kennedy, kinda speaking of what you're talking about. Whenever, whenever, whenever this was originally brought up, there was only five areas that this money could be used for. It was discussed in the budget, in the budget meeting proceeding, I think Mr. King was there, and some others there. But at the time, it was very limited what it could be used for. At the time, it was discussed being used for IT upgrade for the sheriff's department, he's gotta have. Also, for the, for the roof at the courthouse. It was trying to be used for stuff that the county was gonna have to spend a large amount of money for, and it can only be spent in certain areas. Now that has changed, as the mayor said. It would be my recommendation, everybody wants a piece of pie now. And I get that. I'm not fussy about that, I get it. It would be my recommendation, once the mayor completes his class, gets his other money, that this comes back to the budget committee. And let the budget committee look at these requests and then present them to the town commission.
Yes, that, I have got a, quite a large list of just the, the interest of the first five requirements. So, and I know since it has opened up to be put into the county in general, I've done have at least two to three other requests. So we need to just get them all up and prioritize them. So we need to just get them all up and prioritize them together and go over it. Yes, sir, Mr. Jerry.
How much, uh, oil paid is planned on going down around the house? Do we feel the price is hard over to the, uh, uh, our, our?
All right, for estimate purposes, they told me I had to get cost estimates on all of it. So I've got cost estimate for the south side of the new ambulance building, the backside of the ambulance building, a new parking lot over there where the U-Haul was, and for the park that we gravelled, that to be all taped. That's what I've got an estimate on. Now, now we can go back and look at that to see, you know, what needs to be done first. That's, that's.
I just, right, our budget, you know, the roads are very important, get the emergency vehicles and things out, we have roads washed out, he came back, so we could get out.
His budget for the major game caused the, caused the fuel tank.
Yes. That's what I say, we'll need to go back and look at the situation again to see what is the most priority and use that money for that purpose.
Three ninety-three thousand, but this, dog, I've got county money, this is federal money.
Yes.
That's three ninety-three thousand.
Right, because at, at the time, this money couldn't have been used, it had to be used for like five different things. So now that has changed and it can be. So that's, that's what I'm saying is I think.
It might change, this guy might change a lot, you know.
And I, before we get this, it could change again.
Right.
So, which one, I, I've worked on this for six months and the first of this month, he's changed, he changed it. So I, all this, I've got all the records.
Cause I'm, I'm not against, that's not what I'm saying. But before we sit here tonight and eighteen people start divvying out, this money, this money, this money, this money, I think we need to have a list of what needs to be done and look at it and prioritize it, try to put the money where it needs to go the best. So just tonight on the way, I'm throwing it here and throwing it there and throwing it there. Danny can probably.
Okay. Is there any other business? Yes, sir, Mr. Blaine.
Sorry, I keep letting this go. This fee, I don't know if any of us can realize what's gonna, what's gonna happen, what's gonna go on, put this fee here. I've talked several of you. You do have that, uh, choice of property tax increase. A lot of people that I, that won't contact me, uh, on Facebook publicly has contacted me privately. And I think we even have a, uh, a, uh, survey, if that person wants to tell us about it. And, and I can't tell you, I cannot tell you who voted in that survey. I can't even promise you that it's people from Chester County. But he, that person put it on his page and I put it on my page. And we had a small sampling, does that person wanna, wanna tell us what happened?
Put that survey out for District Six. See the two options and then any questions that they had. There's a hundred and fourteen people that responded. Granted, that's not majority of the county. Sixty percent said that they wanted a fifteen cent tax increase. The other.
Say that again.
Do a sixty percent, sixty point five percent, I think is what I told you. Uh, thirty-nine point five percent wanted the eight dollar fee. Again, that's a hundred and fourteen. If we're gonna table this, we can put it back out there on social media and let more people vote and put their questions on there that they had. But I think we've answered a lot of the questions tonight. Like Amber and Danny answered a lot of those questions that we've had. But like I said, there's a hundred and fourteen people that voted. Sixty percent say they want the fifteen cent tax, property tax. And the other thirty-nine point five percent said that they wanted the income.
I appreciate you saying that. Now, uh. Oh, it's getting old. Again, the people are, are talking to us, saying let's just do the property tax increase. So you have that option, I agree with what I was gonna say. Also, time is of the essence and I'm, and I'm speaking for the county commission because they got to make this decision. If we do a private act to get us in line to plate this tax, this fee, whatever, uh, for next October, we have to have a private act ready to go to Nashville by January. You're gonna have a September meeting, you're gonna have a November meeting, correct?
That's right.
And we need to, we're gonna have to stop tailing this at some point. I'm not angry, I'm just saying we have got to make a decision one way or another if we're gonna do this by October, by the time taxes go out October twenty twenty-one.
September, I'm sorry. September is about the latest time of year.
September is about the latest. You've got to have, you've got to have this, can't just write a letter to send it to Nashville. It's gotta be approved, re-root, uh, red, red, attorneys, whatever. It's not just, it's not a small undertaking, none of this is gonna be a small undertaking.
This private act has to be passed on the next.
Yes.
That, that's what a private act is, it's just to say, it's just to let Chester County do this special thing.
Ms. Russell?
Oh, I got a question. I know I was in the meeting, we talked about taking a portion of money for them to operate until it's worked out. Now that we had it worked out, we're waiting for three months. Where are they gonna get the money to operate? So if we can't let them have all the money we got put back, that's not gonna work. So where will we get money for them to operate till we make it to do?
At this point, right now, we've got about three hundred and eight thousand. I mean, Carlos, how y'all gonna go out with the money? If you don't, I need y'all to tell me that. And then I will start shutting down the community centers in three days before I do the conference thing. It may not gonna get it. Because.
Everyone needs to be really studying on it and doing, cause we need to make a decision of, in September, maybe.
But, but you talked about the next year's table will be broken. That's what I got to say.
Very nice.
But they're gonna have to have money.
It's running on these fund balance right now.
Right. And that ain't gonna last long.
So we, 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 we flat work it in to make sure we don't run balance. So we are going to have to do this quickly as we can so that we can get it sorted. And for the first three months of next year, he's wanting to be funded from somewhere.
What you think about it is, if we pass it tonight, which was tabled, look how long it's gonna take if everything goes alright?
He would still need money for next year for three months. At which point, if he is, if he needs too much money, he can try and pay some of that back, but he's not, he's not that poor, he doesn't make the house money, you are, so, you know.
I'm getting aware of that, but it's over, he's still, he, 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 trust me, he doesn't, he, 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 so I have to, I have to lock the fund balance right now. That's what we, 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 we need to use.
That you're gonna ask the question, oh, that's where the budget change, your fund balance, that's where they're operating from.
From the C D three. Without money going back in there, they're not.
Hey, y'all. Boy, if anybody happens to be, you know, if we have, let them all back there.
We know this problem was last day for round, we should have budget for this. Tell me what kind of information you need. I will try to find out how many houses we got, but I don't know. So if you need any other information privately or publicly, ask, let me know what you need so I can get you what, what you're asking for. And I, put that in the note, thank you.
That, that's why we wanted to try to get every one questions answered tonight. All the commissioners, you don't need any information and if you still haven't got it, we need to know what you're wanting and, and we will get the number of producing household, producing trash.
I want to meet and have a talk with you, probably.
Okay, on, on with the agenda, we need to approve the notaries.
Yes, sir, we have several. Lydia K. Pat, Selena Grace Harris, Jimmy Stout, Deborah E. Hurd, Kristy Elizabeth Gugis, Lloyd Rogers Taylor, and that's it.
We have a motion to approve.
Right.
State your name, made the motion and the second.
Right. Right, okay, I'm sorry.
I got it, Denver and Larry Blackstone.
Okay.
Is any discussion about any of the notaries? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'm glad everyone attended today and, uh, tonight. And I know, uh, I hope the information got to you and if somehow you have any questions, Mr. Lance, you can get in touch with him, he's usually in the office every day. And if that's all, uh, promotion.
We try to work out when, when the budget committee can meet because this is something we need to move on. We probably need to get this worked up together, put this money through extension. We probably gotta make the money appropriate, partly, but not unappropriated. That way, it's anyway, it's gonna get to me, it's appropriated.
We, we have a motion to adjourn, we need to.
I like that.